Hi, everybody. I'm Scott Johnston for North Beach TV. We're here at the Ocean Shores Public Library for a candidate's forum for the three ladies who have filed for Ocean Shores City Council seat number four. There will be a primary on August 1st, and the three candidates are here to tell us why we should vote for them. Okay, and we're here with Mary Jo Lorenz, who is the president of the Friends of the Library, and she's going to tell us what's going on here. Mary Jo?
Okay, well, you know, a number of our members had said that they don't even know what our candidates look like, and so we decided that we would sponsor a meet-and-greet program so that they were able to, you know, see who the candidates were this year.
And just give us a little bit about Friends of the Library.
Friends of the Library is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was created in 1972, and the library was, it was, the emphasis behind that was to get a library started in Ocean Shores.
All right, well, thank you, guys, for all your efforts over the years and for your efforts in organizing this event.
Yeah, and it's just a meet-and-greet. We're not endorsing any candidates. We just want people to see who the candidates are.
Okay, there you go, and we're about ready to begin, folks, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome. I'm Mary Jo Lorenz, and I'm the president of Friends of the Library, and I want to thank everyone for coming here today. First of all, I want to ask that you please silence your cellphones, just in being respectful to everyone. Today's event is about meeting the three candidates that are running in the primary. We had so many members of Friends of the Library who said they didn't even know what the candidates looked like, so we decided that we would put together a little meet-and-greet for everybody to be able to meet and see who they are and what they're all about. So that's what today is all about, is these three candidates that are up here. We have other candidates that are in the audience, but today's event is about these three candidates that are running in the primary for position four. Everyone should be getting their ballots by the end of the week. That's why it's very timely that we did this today, so you knew who the candidates were. Each candidate will have 10 minutes to talk about their platform, their history, whatever they want to talk about. It's their 10 minutes. After that 10 minutes, we'd ask that the audience can respectfully ask questions to each candidate individually. So the first candidate that we'll be able to hear from and then ask questions from is Jennifer.
Hello?
It's on.
Thank you all for coming. So my name's Jennifer Haebele-Zeyman. It's a difficult last name, so people often just call me Jennifer or Jennifer H. That's fine. And for those of you who don't know or can't work it out, I'm originally from the UK. I came here to this country in 2016 on the Spousal Green Card Program. My husband is born and raised American, and he brought me here in 2016. Initially, we were in Snohomish County due to where I work. However, in 2019, the company made the decision to allow people to work from home, and I took that opportunity, and then I thought, hmm, now why am I living 30 minutes from the office front door if I can work from home? Let's move to the beach. So in 2019, we came here, bought a house, bought the second house we looked at, and we've been here ever since and very happy with our three dogs. And I still work the same job and still love it. But prior to that, so I'm from the UK originally. When I was 19, I got a scholarship to university in Germany to study my master's in Germanic and Scandinavian Philology, which is the science of language and literature. So I'm in my element here in a library. And after I graduated, I qualified as a translator. Initially, worked as a translator in Germany. I was self-employed. Did get my name inside some books translated by, which was quite an achievement. But then, when I was 25, I decided to change tack, and I then decided that I wanted to return to the UK and take a job in a completely different industry, and that was in air travel. And I work in that industry even now, overseas travel, and I really enjoy that. Someone's phone's ringing. When we moved to Ocean Shores, initially, I wasn't that much involved with community because I was a green card holder when I first came here. In 2001, I became eligible for US citizenship, and I decided to apply for that. Immediately, I became eligible because I wanted to be part of this country in a proper way, in a permanent way. So I submitted my application in 2021, sorry, in 2019, which was when I became eligible. And it normally takes about eight months and a bunch of fees and a bunch of paperwork for your application to go through, and I submitted mine in September of 2019, and then in March, just as I was nearing the end, March 2020, COVID happened, and all the offices shut down, and that delayed my citizenship application by another year. So I finally, finally took my oath of allegiance on the March 22nd of 2021 in the USCIS office in Toquilla, and nine minutes later, I was a registered voter for Gray's Harbor County, and apparently that's the fastest voter registration for a new citizen. I had it all set up on my iPhone, thank goodness for technology, and just pressed submit as soon as I came out of the room, the office where the ceremony took place. Due to COVID, we didn't have the big ceremony that you sometimes see on the TV with the flags and the anthems and the shaking hands and so on. I was in a perspex box like a Barbie doll on a shelf, and the officer was in another perspex box next to me, and then my certificate of naturalization was passed through a slot wrapped in plastic, and then I was shown the back door and asked to leave, and that was that. So here I am now as what is officially a naturalized citizen, but I prefer the term "American" by choice. I just, I chose to become an American, and I chose to be part of this community. And then I started to get a little bit more involved, listening to council meetings, following various blogs of people who are involved in various issues and so on. And I was listening to council meetings, and I was hearing the same things over and over again from the citizens, and these weren't unreasonable requests from people. They wanted sidewalks. They wanted more police. They wanted, now we're getting better water, that people are asking for. They're wanting the wheat to be taken out of the freshwaterways. These are obvious things. These are not unreasonable requests, not extravagant. They just want to feel safe in their community. They want to feel that they've been heard, and these things were being said over and over again. And what I noticed was we have a wonderful public comment opportunity at city council meetings, and many people use that, and it's always interesting to hear everybody speak, but that's where it ends. There's no feedback. There's no further, it may appear on an agenda at a future session or something like that, but I wanted to see more involvement. I think we need more town hall-style approach, a more open and approachable government for our citizens. They need to feel their voices are heard. I've been out doorknocking lately, and we're hearing the same things from people in the neighborhood. We don't think anyone listens to us. We're not being heard, and I just think somebody wants to, needs to stand up for these people. So although it's my name on the ballot, it's all of you that are going to be speaking, because that's what I'm doing it for, to speak for all of you. It's not for me. I'm not here to improve my resume or get, learn some new skills or start a new career in politics or anything like that. It's just about grassroots citizen representation, and I think that's somewhat lacking here. I think we need more involvement. I'd like to see that we have more open communication, more transparency. I think if we had that, that might solve some of the other complaints that we're seeing about public records requests and so on, if we had more transparency. And I also think that people, when they feel more involved and feel more that their, that their voices count and that they're being listened to, it's then easier for other things to happen, other things to fall into place after that, and then we won't have as many measures that fail at the ballot because people won't have lost the confidence. Right now, that's what I'm hearing, you know, money being spent, that people, they really don't have confidence that it's being spent wisely or most efficiently. There seems to be, I live just a couple of blocks really from the, well, it's basically just a pole barn that was built for the public works that went massively over budget, and every time I leave the house, I see that, and I think, yeah, I can see why people are frustrated with these things. Just, it, we seem to be sort of stuck in a rut, and we need to move on with these things, get what people want, and listen to them, and start making people feel like they're part of this. So that's why I decided to run. I have no previous experience, but I just have the desire to represent people and have the voices heard and to be speaking for them.
And I was just reminded that this is being recorded, and that you can be able to hear it on kosw.com in the archives, and it's also going to be put on Channel 68, and we also have the newspaper here that is taking notes, too. So we're getting a widespread coverage of this event. All right, so now we have 10. You bet you can clap! This just shows you how much this is needed in this community for people to be able, and we were hoping that some organization was going to stand up and do this, but Friends of the Library did it, so thank you. So now we have 10 minutes for questions for Jennifer. We do have a timer over here, and sir, if you want to come up and...
Hi, Jennifer. I enjoyed hearing what you had to say. You okay?
I don't think this is on, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, it is. Oh, sorry.
I enjoyed hearing what you had to say.
Thank you.
I truly believe that what is missing in this community is a community voice.
Right.
And people who live here don't think they have a say in what happens in this city. You know, the council and the city management just kind of does what they want. We go into council meetings and say things, and I think it goes in one ear and out the other. So what you're saying is what I'd like to hear. Now, people who know me know that my passion here is to somehow find a way of giving urgent care into our community. I've worked really hard on that. I've hit a lot of roadblocks. I have not had much help from the council or city management in this matter for many years. I know for fact that there's small communities in Washington that have urgent care. They're our size and even smaller. So my question to you, would you support that effort? Now, last time we had elections, everybody who ran said they would support trying to get urgent care here, and here we are at the next election cycle. Not one thing has been done.
I fully agree with you. Sadly, I needed urgent care myself. In January, I had a massive bilateral pulmonary embolism and a heart attack in January, and had to be taken initially to Aberdeen, but then eventually into Olympia for life-saving surgery. And because I had to go all the way to Olympia, I'm not saying we're going to have, that we will ever have a full-scale hospital here. I think that's unrealistic, but urgent care, yeah. I needed oxygen immediately, and that would have bought me more time, things like that, for people who need that sort of thing. And we're paying with our tax dollars here, a million plus a year to the hospital district and see nothing for it. We need to start demanding that they start showing up for what they're in.
Is that something you could take on and work on?
I would love to, yes, yes. I absolutely am with you on that.
Hello? I'd like to ask a question that most of the people here are really invested in.
Okay.
We need to have really good funding for the library and to support. Need to keep it in the general fund. Do you support that?
I do indeed. I do indeed, yes. As I said, I have a master's in philology, which is the study of words, basically, and the history of those, so books are my thing. And I think that's something that is a life essential. I know others disagree on that, but personally, and this is about what I think, to your question, I do want to see the library supported. I feel that it is essential, not just, it's not just books anymore. As we all know, libraries are no longer books and just reading. It's community events, it's community involvement, it's supplementary education for the children on top of what they have in school, gets them to meet things. And I think to develop the love of books and words and so on from an early age, I think that's what led me into the university path that I took, is because books were such an important part of our life. And the library does more than host events like this. And I think, yeah, the library is one of the essential services of any community. I agree with you.
Do you have any other questions?
Hi, Jennifer. How are you?
Hi, I'm very lucky.
As you may have heard, there's a lot of citizens that are dealing with some water quality issues in their homes. So far, welcome to the club. So far, there has been action taken as far as bacterial assembly testing, getting the city back on track with their annual testing and requirements for being compliant, but yet nothing has been mentioned about addressing the mold and bacteria in the water. Do you have any action or any thoughts on how we can move forward to get this taken care of?
Well, I'm not a technician, so I don't understand any of the processes that are involved here or how this is happening, but I absolutely agree with you that this is an issue that is, this is a life essential water. 2023, in the richest country in the world, we shouldn't be wondering about the quality of our water or questioning the quality of our water. It should be a given that every citizen has access to clean and safe drinking water without the smells, without the, I don't have the slime, thank goodness, in our house that I hear some people have, and that must be quite horrible, but we do have the, it has a sort of a sulfur-type smell to it sometimes, and that's, that's not, I buy bottled water. Initially, that was my choice, but now I realize it's probably not a choice. I probably had to do that, but I do think we have to have to push hard on this. And yeah, I agree with you. It seems that, I hear your comments every, every other week at council meeting, and I sense the frustration with you, and I completely understand that. I feel the same way, too, and I thank you for bringing that to council and to try and get some action, but it is something that should be a priority before other things. That's just for our health, for our well-being of all of us, yeah.
If we have time for one more question?
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi.
I will make this very quick and simple. Do you support mail-in voting?
Sorry?
Mail-in balloting.
Mail, oh, votes by mail?
Right.
Yes, yes.
Quick and easy.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right, we probably have time for one more question.
Morning.
I'm a fairly new resident, love Ocean Shores. I'm interested in a lot of the items that you talked about today and other people brought up. My one concern is, do you have any financial understanding of how the city government works, how we would fund a lot of the things that you're talking about? Because I think a lot of the frustration that people have, they have a lot of good ideas, but we all know everything takes money, and you also have rules and regulations that we have to follow. So I could come up with a huge list of everything I want, but we're not going to be able to do it because I will become more and more involved in this community because I think it's a wonderful place to live.
You're right.
And so instead of just ideas, how do we make those things really happen? And we all know, even a nonprofit or for-profit, you have to have the funding and the money and the rules and regulations. So how will you make those things happen?
So let's start with experience in this note, but we have on our city staff, we pay very good money to people who are experts in financial matters, who do that for us. They're paid very good salaries, and that's their job to make sure that the budgets are in place. The council obviously has to have the oversight there, but I don't think that any specific knowledge or qualifications are required for that. It's quite a simple matter of what are your wants, what are your needs, and how do you balance those out with the money coming in and what you have available. We all make purchase decisions every day in our households. Do we need this? Can we afford it now? Can we defer it? Can we get it cheaper somewhere else? Can we repair what we've got, or do we have to buy what's new? It's just the same thing, but on a larger scale. I think anyone who's run a household and kept within their means can follow the same principles with the help of the finance department. And there needs to be a lot of open communication there as to...
Well, I'm saying that every idea has to be based on a firm platform, facts, and everything before you even present it. To me, the person presenting those ideas to the council needs to have a firm understanding of the financial aspects and also the pros and cons of each idea you bring forward, because a lot of times when you get wrapped up in an idea, you're not always looking at the other side and what the repercussions of that could be. So that's why I brought this up.
Sure, and that's very valid, but these are things that the citizens are wanting, and the citizens, if they're wanting them, then it's up to us to find a way to provide them to them.
Thank you, Jennifer. I really appreciate, now everybody knows who Jennifer is. All right, next, we have this really secret ballot way of doing it. I took three spoons and wrote 1, 2, 3 on them and hit them, and they pick who's going for the second, third. The number two spoon goes to Allison.
Hi.
I, thank you to the Friends for having this today, so we get an opportunity to get out and also meet people. A little bit of my background. We moved here from Atlanta, Georgia, back in the 80s, and we're up in Everett. And in 2007, we had been down visiting Friends and fell in love with Ocean Shores, and we bought a house. We knew we wanted to retire here. We knew we wanted this to be our permanent place. So in 2007, we bought a house and then lived here part-time, and then in 2015, we made the permanent move. And wherever I lived, I've always been involved in the community, and that was one of the first things I wanted to do here, was to get involved, and I started volunteering. If you go to any of the events, you will probably see me. I work all the events we have here, and I just love it. We have done Razor Clam, Sand and Sawdust, Hot Wild's coming up. I'll be asking for volunteers, Celtic Festival, Gray's Harbor Youth Athletics. So I really like to be involved in the community, and part of being involved in the community gives me a chance to talk to people in the community and see what their concerns are, see what needs they have, what are things they want brought to the community. I was attending school board meetings and city council meetings from the time we made the permanent move, and I decided I wanted to get a little more involved than just volunteering. And so when a position came up on the board, on the council, I applied and was unanimously appointed to the board, and that was very important to me, that I had all of the council doing that and supporting me in that position. While I've been on council, I've had the opportunity to work with great members of council. I've enjoyed working with all of them. We've worked together on a lot of things, you know, things I want to see, and I've heard people talk about, the sidewalks. The sidewalks keep coming up over and over again. They, the grant that was several years ago that went bad because a decision couldn't be made, there is money out there for grants that I think we need to go after to look at bringing in sidewalks. I was a big supporter of the Hydounes Trail. I love the fact, and people talk about having walkable trails, walkable ways downtown, and I think that's really important, because that's what I'm hearing from people that they want, the safe paths to schools, being able to extend that and give more, more pathways for people. And the way we can do a lot of these things, we have an amazing grant writer here in Shores, and then also with us joining the Conservation District that gives us access to, to more opportunities for grants. And I think those are things that, that we can do. Of course, our waterways. You know, we all talk about the waterways need to be fixed, but then what's being done to fix them? And the council did, in the budget, put in for a comprehensive plan for repairing and cleaning up the waterways, and I hope to see that start moving forward very soon. Because while I don't live on the waterways, I know a lot of people that do, and when I've gone to visit them, I'm like, oh, not looking too good. So it's, it's time to, we've got the planned money in the budget, and I think it's time to move forward with that. You know, I, I think that the library is so important to our community, so important. I mean, it's for, our kids use it, the adults use it, our seniors use it, people who do not have access to computers or internet are here, the programming that they do, it's, it just brings so much. It's like the hub of our community. And my background being in education, I have worked in special education, or I will be starting year number 28 in September, and youth and working with kids is my passion, and that is another thing I really would love to see come, be in our community. If it were not for the library and the things that they do for our kids, there's, there's not a lot else out there. We have no YMCA, we have no Boys and Girls Club, we have the library. Our middle high school does not even have a library. If it were not for Michelle and the great people that work here, our kids would have access to nothing. And so to me, it's important to keep this going and, and having it for all of our citizens. Like I said, my background is in special education. I have a bachelor's in K-12 special ed, a master's in curriculum and instruction, and then for some reason I thought, oh, let's just go to school a little while longer. So I got another master's in educational leadership and administration. And right now, I'm working for Hope Williams School District as a whole child coach. That will be a new position for me this year, where I'll be working with kids of trauma and kids with social-emotional problems, and helping them and working with them and their families. And I'm very excited to be doing that, because the harbor is, is a high-poverty district, and there are a lot of kids of trauma, and a lot of grandparents raising kids and aunts and uncles raising kids. And so being able to support those families is, is a passion of mine. I, I think that for me, it's very important for me giving back to the community and having all these opportunities to volunteer and be involved. And like I said, that's a great way. I have met so many people doing that, where I've hit them up to volunteer or, you know, I meet them at all these events where I'm working, and I have enjoyed every second of it. I have enjoyed my time on council. I have listened to people, and I have voted by what people have told me, you know, they want. I mean, you're always going to hear different points. There are people who want 90 days camping. There are people who want 120 days camping. There are people who want camping year-round. There are people who want, so listening to all of those opinions and, and all of those ideas, and then trying to make the best decision. And like I said, I think the council has worked well together. Do we agree 100% of the time? No, but I've never seen a board or council that does, but I think we've worked very well together. And I have enjoyed my time, and I hope to continue, and that's about it for me.
All right, now we have 10 minutes for questions for Allison.
Very simply, you support the library. Should the library be funded by levy or by general fund?
Absolutely by general fund. I, like Jennifer, I am passionate about this place. I love this place, and it, you know, it supports everybody in the community, not just the young, not just the seniors, not just the middle-aged. It supports everybody. And events like this, like the programs they have all summer long, bringing in the magician, doing all these different things for the kids, the summer reading program, that's amazing, and I would hate to think that that could ever possibly go away, because this is like the central hub, I think, of our community.
Thank you, Allison. A pleasure to be here, and thank you for all that you do for the children. You and I have had numerous conversations. You and I have had numerous conversations about that. Would you tell the audience, please, what kind of education that you have taken up in the time you've been on council with municipal government? There are a lot of courses that can be taken so that you can educate yourself. There was a question asked to Jennifer about the budget. What have you done about that? Because we haven't heard that part of it, of what you've done. Thank you.
I have done a lot of research and reading online. I do work full-time as an educator, so some of the programs that are out there are offered during the day when I am teaching, and I am not able to attend the program through Grace Harbor Community College, which I had planned to do, except they quit doing it online. And so I have done webinars and taken instruction and done things with that online through different courses.
I just wanted to pose the same question to you as I did as to Jennifer about the water quality and what's being done about the actual aspects of our water.
I think it's got to be addressed. If it means the health department comes in and they do testing at the individual houses and get information and see what's going on and coming up with a solution to solve it. I mean, I'm lucky, I don't have that, but for those that do, I think it's got to be addressed, and it's got to be addressed soon. And it needs to be taken care of, because it's not safe if it's like that.
So my passion is medical care here, and I'm always going to talk about it. One thing you brought up was that we have a really good grant writer here. I've tried to work with the mayor, and like, all we wanted to do was have that grant writer come to one of our meetings and spend an hour with us, because I have, myself, have gone out and found grants that we can use to help get better medical facility here. But I can't do it on myself, because the city needs to be part of that. So I tried several times to get the current mayor to release the grant writer, to come to one of our meetings and just explain to us, well, these are the kind of grants you can get. This is how you can go forward with the idea of getting a grant, and maybe in the future, something that could be done to help us get that grant. We need a grant. Now, you brought that up. I'd like to know how you feel about that. Would you move forward with trying to get a grant, or at least talking to people and trying to get the council? We need the council to agree on it, and we've got a couple of people on the council that do. We need the council to agree on it, and we also need the mayor and the city management to agree on it. So how do you guys get together on that and bring it to the public so we can talk about it and move forward with it? We really... The community's growing. Our demographic's growing. There's more younger people here all the time. We really do, for the size of our community, need to have some sort of urgent care. So how would you approach the grant situation?
Absolutely. I would love to see an urgent care here. And I think you have to start with grants. There are so many grants for so... I think pretty much anything you ever want to do, you can somewhere find a grant for it. And I think that it is something that we really need to look into and start working on that, because like you said, our community is growing. And the amount of people that we have here year-round now has grown. We're around 7,000 now, I think. And also, you know, with the tourists that come in, and people get hurt and kids get hurt, and I would love to see an urgent care. And I absolutely would love to be a part of a group that is researching that and working with our grant writer and see what we can do with that. Absolutely, I support it.
Allison, I have been extremely impressed at the way you have... The speed with which you've picked up on council. You seem to have a really good grasp. How did you get that grasp of what falls within a council realm and what is actually another government entity? Like, for instance, I'm going to say we pay for healthcare. And we need to start there with the jurisdiction that pays, that collects the money from us. But anyway, I have watched you, and how did you get involved in all the volunteer efforts?
The way I got involved with volunteering was attending some events, and I was like, gosh, this is fun. I want to do more. So I would find people who are in charge of those events. And back in the day, some of them were organized by different organizations. And so when they were running them, and I got involved with them and volunteering, and then...
We bought property here. We planned to build here. COVID was a disaster. The whole process was a disaster, and we bought the house we now live in. My husband and I had rather an interesting start. I was pregnant my senior year. My first half of my senior year, second half of my senior year, I finished school, got married, had a baby, and graduated, in that order. Forty-seven years later, we're still together. Not a bad way to go. I do have a little bit of a prepared speech. A former boss of mine always said, "My door is always open," and that's the kind of council member I want to be. I want to be accessible, I want to be approachable, and I want to be a problem solver for you. It's not about me, it's all about you. I want to be able to hear your ideas and your concerns, bring them to the council, and work on a solution. The council may control the budget, but it's my money and it's your money that they're spending. And I want to make sure that it's spent in a good way for things that will make Ocean Shores a thriving, that vibrant city. I learned a lot working about 40 years in both government and private sector jobs. I learned how to resolve differences. I learned how to coordinate projects and work with people to get things done efficiently. I learned how to be a team player. I learned a lot how to research and problem solve. No amount of formal education is going to give you that, but real-world experience will give you that. And I'm going to bring that experience and those skills to the council. I believe my yes is yes and my no is no. I honor and I uphold my commitments. I've performed in community theater, and I absolutely love community theater. And I'm an active member of the North Beach Singers here in Shores. These activities involve a focused participation during your rehearsal times and a huge commitment to make sure you have a good program, good performance. For years, I was an active member and a past president of our car club. And that doesn't seem like much to a lot of people, but there's a lot of work behind the scenes, organizing events, running the meetings, publishing the newspaper, and working with the board to make sure that our car club was vital and healthy and active. In my previous hometown, before we moved here, I was instrumental in implementing a community volunteer coalition called Just One Thing Battleground. We formed and trained mentor teams. We organized hope bag stuffing parties, and we created a robust resource network to meet the immediate and long-term needs of homeless individuals. Our goal was to end and prevent homelessness and panhandling in our community. Our motto was, "If everyone could do just one thing, we could end homelessness." The hope bags contained a bottle of water, a snack, some toiletries, and a little blue card that would direct that person back to the job network when they were ready. We encouraged everyone to carry a few of those hope bags in their car so that they'd have something to hand a person instead of cash. Even though I no longer live in that community, that coalition is still actively helping homeless individuals regain their sense of self-worth and live a better life. For Ocean Shores, I see regular town halls as a great way to keep the communication lines open between you, the citizens, the mayor's office, and the city council. The people who live here must have a voice. They must have a place to use that voice and a mechanism for getting answers. Citizen engagement is crucial to a lively and vibrant city. Small businesses, in fact, all businesses here, I believe, would benefit from a viable local chamber of commerce. In this area, we can and must do better. Our waterways, our water is an important part of daily life here in Shores. Stormwater is a primary source of those waterways. Ditches and culverts that drain to nowhere should be fixed so that the fresh water flows into the canals and the lakes, rather than simply seeping into the ground. I believe the council should take a hard-line look at the budget. If the council wants to spend tax money on new projects, first seek out new sources of revenue. And I think a chamber of commerce would be vital to that, bringing in new businesses and therefore bringing in fresh tax dollars. Current items on the budget should be looked at and, if possible, moved or set aside before asking citizens for a tax increase. We must get that hospital taxing district to meet our needs for healthcare in our city. I realize it's not the city's responsibility to run a healthcare facility, but every member of the council should be actively involved, looking for a solution, and not simply saying it's not our job and moving on. I'm optimistic about the Hydunes Trail. If it's well-maintained, it may be beneficial to many of our less mobile residents. My husband cannot go for walks on the beach. He uses a mobility scooter for any sort of distance. A few times he's been on the beach, he's been driven there or had a short walk back to a vehicle. It is my hope that he and others like him will be able to use that Hydunes Trail and get the full enjoyment that our amazing beach has to offer. It has been said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." Every person deserves and will receive from me respect. We each have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. How you receive and use those rights is up to you. I am here to listen and help you in any way I can. My door is always open. Thank you, and thank you to the Friends of Library for this opportunity to be before you and help you understand where I'm coming from.
Questions for Caroline.
Good morning. First, thank you to you three sitting there in those hot seats. It's not easy taking those swings and arrows.
I've got a question for you, Caroline. Considering that the library is for the least fortunate people in our community, it is a critical need. It's not a want. The people who use the Wi-Fi, the people who use the tax advice book-a-techy, it's a long list of functions for which the library is a critical need. If it goes out to a levy and the levy fails, this time next year, this building could be sold off. And 3/4 of the people in this community who don't pay any attention to community politics, they'll wake up one morning and their library will be gone. Do you support keeping the library in the general fund?
I absolutely do. I love libraries. I've always loved libraries. When I was a six- and seven-year-old kid, believe it or not, in the small town I grew up in, and it was fairly safe in the 60s, to be out by yourself, I was going to the library all summer long, participating in the reading program. One of the first things I did when I moved here was pop into the library and get myself a library card. I love libraries. I think libraries are critical and a vital piece of any community, because, yes, they serve everybody. They have so many things, like you mentioned, the Wi-Fi. The Wi-Fi is important for people who maybe don't have it, or maybe theirs isn't as good, or power goes out at their house and they need to work, but the power's on at the library. Let's pop into the library and get my work done. So yes, I do agree that it should be in the general budget. Thank you for asking.
You got to deal with me, too.
No problem, Mike.
Okay, so you said some things there, kind of caught my ear a little bit about city not running a medical care facility, which that's not something I'm after. I'm just after an avenue that we could follow to get grants where we support, have a private clinic, kind of like the library. It's a private facility, we want to be, that's fine with me. I'd like to see a medical clinic or an urgent care clinic the same way. So I wasn't saying anything about having the city, you know, take it out of their budget to pay for it. And the thing about Grace Harbor, we've had the council sit in on several of our meetings, along with their CEO, and he's not planning on doing anything to help us out. He's told us that. But they went to Montezano, which has a smaller population, and they got a clinic there. So why couldn't that clinic have come here? I don't understand their reasoning when they did that. And I know we pay them over $1 million a year, but all that money does is go to help pay their debt. It does nothing to help us have better medical care here. It just goes towards their debt payment every single year. So again, what are your feelings about trying to get urgent care here? We need to have help, and it has to be a city-wide thing. It's got to be the mayor, administration, all the council, and all the people who live here. We all got to be behind it, otherwise it's not going to happen. How would you put forth a plan to make that happen?
Thank you, Mike. As you know, shortly after I moved here, I began attending your meetings that we're working towards, and I was actively participating in those meetings as best I could and understand the frustration that I've lived through, the frustration with the whole hospital district and the hospital itself and getting nowhere with them. And I fully agree, if we can get grants, if we can get help from the grant writer in the city to get grants, then let's do it. Every single member, as I said, every single member of that city council should be engaged, because it's for them, too. It's for you, it's for us, it's for the tourists. To get an urgent clinic here, at the very least, I'd like to see more, but an urgent clinic is a good start to get the full solution for us. I'm solution-focused. I'm a problem solver. I'm going to be in there with you, asking, get some grants, let's see what we can do. Where can we put it? What's the best location? I'm with you on this, Mike, and I have been.
Last election cycle, everybody who ran said they supported it, and nothing has happened. So we're hearing it again. I promise you, we're going to hold your feet to the fire.
You know, Mike will stand it. Thank you, Mike.
I hear what others have said. Thank all three of you for being up here. Great, great job. My specific question, the city has been holding monthly chat meetings for quite a while now, and during those chat meetings is an opportunity for the city to inform and also for the citizens to ask questions. Do you consider that the equivalent of a town hall? Thank you.
In a way, I do, and in a way, I don't, because to me, a town hall is more open back-and-forth communication, whereas I've been at the city chats, and I do appreciate the mayor offering those. But even from those, questions have been asked by citizens and no response. It's not just crickets, it's nothing. They don't get answers. I see a town hall as a place for us give and take, not just presenting, like the recent one that presented that Blue Zones thing. It was, what, an hour-long presentation with a little bit of time for citizen engagement? And I think it's fine to bring in something like that to inform us, but we need more citizen engagement and back-and-forth and asking questions like you folks are today and getting answers at the time. And I had a boss one time, my first office career, he said, "You don't have to know everything, you just have to know where to look it up." So even in a town hall-type session, and I think a town hall could... So, even in a town hall-type session, and I think a town hall could start with a general topic like that one did, but it should also be open to other ideas and other questions to bring those ideas, have a voice and a place for people to use their voice. I don't have to have all the answers. I don't have to know everything, but I do need to know where to look it up. I need to be able to look things up under the laws. We have ordinances here that are based on covenants that were written many years ago. I know how to look up the ordinances and read them. So, to answer your question, I see a town hall as more of a give and take and engaging the community. Thank you for your question.
I know. Here I go again. But Carolyn, what? Caroline, sorry. I want to ask again a couple of just questions. First of all, both Jennifer and Allison talked about their educational experience, and I'd like you to address yours. I'd also like to know, do you have any financial background at all, you know, that you've actually done? And a lot of people here today are all discussing very concrete things that they would like done. So, as much as I am someone that can really talk, ask my friends back there, it's what do you want and what are you willing to do to get it and how do you get it? So, it's great to have open doors and even have town hall meetings, but we have to look at what do we really want? How do... What are those items that we concretely need so people don't keep coming up here and saying, "Well, last year, something was going to happen, but nothing's happening again"? To decide on that, present those, and there's lots of ways to present it to the community, and really say, "These are the things we're focusing on. This is how we're going about getting it. This is what the rules and regulations are, and this is the money we have, and this is how we're going to go about it." To me, that would relieve a lot of the issues that people keep coming up with today. I intend on going to a lot of council meetings myself. I've been here not quite a year. I'm active in the food bank and on the advisory council, and I have some grant experience myself. So, it's my involvement in the community because it's about everyone here. Thank you.
Well, that's a lot of questions. Wow. Okay. First, let me address my educational background. As I said, I was a very young mother. I was a mother at 18, married at 17, mother at 18. We had a lot of years of struggle. And I was a nursing assistant. I got injured on the job. I needed an education, so I went to Clark College. I had three-quarters to get enough education to get a job to help us support each other. And I guess we're out of time.
Go ahead.
Can I finish? So, what I did is I took a certificate course in bookkeeping and general office. And my grades, my dedication to that, I was working with... because of my disability, I was working with the Department of Vocational Rehabilitation. He suggested I talk to his wife, who was an auditor at the IRS. I worked for the IRS for five years. I worked for the Bonneville Power Administration for five years. I worked for a little-known company called Enron for five years. And the last part of my career, I worked for a nonprofit energy electric cooperative in the Midwest analyzing and settling out electric energy bills in the state of California. I myself perform... I maintain an extensive personal budget. So, I understand the basics of you have this much money coming in. You have this much going out. You need to spend a little bit more. What can you cut? Can you find a new revenue source? That's a big one. Find some new revenue sources. I got a part-time job to get me some revenue source in because I wanted to do a few more things. So, and again, I don't have to know everything and have all the answers. I do know where to look it up, and I know how to use mentors. Mentors are amazing people who can guide you and teach you and help you along the way in your journey. Thank you for the question.
I think Butch is about ready to give us the sign that we're going off the air. Two minutes. All right. Well, this has been a great start to the season here, and I'm really hoping that if you have not registered to vote, we have a table in the front lobby of the library with a crew there that is ready to register you to vote so you'll be able to vote in this election. You've now seen who the three candidates are. You know their faces. You know a little bit about them, and so, we feel that you've got a little bit of an education today. I want to thank the radio station, the TV station, for being here today and allowing us to do this, and for the library to giving us the space to be able to do this today, too. I want to emphasize again, Friends of the Library does not endorse any of these candidates. They are here today for you so that you can get to know them so that when you get that ballot, you know that you're voting for the person that you really endorse. The candidates are going to stick around, so if you didn't get a question answered, you can be able to ask them one-on-one or in small groups and get your answers. And again, thank you for coming today.